Oh, yeah, it is.
Mr. Eric, excuse me, sir. Were you able to confirm or no?
Yes.
She will be? Okay, and if you don't mind reminding me what that is.
This is the Elevate Group.
Elevate, and so they will be, the Elevate Group, and they will talk about the introduction. They're
They're securing grants.
Okay, so they're a vendor of the city that will help us procure grants?
Yeah, they would like to.
Okay.
They would like climate action, you know, grants.
Just bring in additional grant writers.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll give it a few minutes. The viewing audience at home, we are a minute after six. Do you have a quorum? Trying to get a quorum for this meeting. Let me see, check with Mr. Bosch. I believe you're correct.
Yeah.
You know how they don't go there right one day. I mean, here you can tell. Learn this, it's nothing like, you know, nothing changed, but with the service scene and the different contracts. You got to use it. Plus, I I used to want to, you know, study and I learned all that stuff. Maybe every big difference, you know, what kind of Yeah, Bruce. All those, oh, wait a minute, I was I was about to make that.
Let me get in the meeting.
And I was with that
Recording in progress.
Okay, so. Ladies and gentlemen, it is 6:07 on Monday night. This is the Highland Park City Council in person in virtual workshop meeting. Our city council scheduled for Monday, June 17th at 6:00 P. M. Deputy Clerk, please call the role.
Councilwoman Shafi. Councilwoman Martin. Councilwoman Manica. Councilwoman Robinson. Council President Thomas.
Here, thank you very much. So ladies and gentlemen, normally for a standard voting meeting, it requires a quorum or a body of five, that's at least three members. This is a workshop. Our city council did not have an organizational meeting on our first day in office, and therefore, we are still subject to the rules, I'm sorry. We are still subject to previous rules. Want to run that role again? Anyway, so tonight's workshop has one item listed and one additional item to be added. That is the draft memorandum agreement between the City of Highland Park, Urban Development Initiative, and the City of Highland Park, and introduction to the Elevate. The organization is called Elevate City again. Is that just her name, Elevate? They are a vendor that will potentially help the city write grants. So we're going to start with our CED Director, Mr. Clerk in Clyburn, who will walk us through the first portion of the meeting.
Okay. Good evening, residents, council, deputy clerk. We were before you, before this, this body, that this, this, this team to help bring the library back. So you did ask for them to come back again to have more time. We are looking to proceed, so we wanted to get back in front of the council. And your package was a draft MOU. There was also the partnership proposal and the public private partnership for library operations handout. Those two were in your packet before. So tonight, I want to just kind of open discussion for the memorandum of the memorandum agreement. So if you had any questions or a chance to take a look at it, we do have members from the group here and online.
That would be Bernard and
No, Ms. Strickland.
And Ms. Strickland, okay.
So, yeah, that was it. I mean, you know, here's the memorandum because we're ready to take, we're ready to move to the next phase, which is coming officially before this body. So I wanted you to review the MOU, and if you had any questions or wanted additional dialogue, per your request, we're back in front of you.
So I'm gonna open up the floor for you to speak on whatever topics that were brought up in the past. I'm completely comfortable with what I've seen.
Right, nothing, I don't remember anything really coming up. You did just say, you know, if you wanted more time to come before you, so I just wanted to bring it on one more time, per the last meeting before we came to you officially.
Members, do you have questions related to the MOU?
So every six years?
Right, Ms. Strickland.
Yes, I have a comment that I would like to make.
Please, ma'am.
Okay, and I want to point out item line three, number three, and that would be on the second page, on the, well, my back page, but on your second page where it states the obligation of the parties. So HPUDI shall perform the following obligations, and I want to point out obligation number three, where it says maintain the fiduciary agreement with Wayne Metro. That is going to be changed. That will not be Wayne Metro. It will be the City of Highland Park. So that's a markup that we will make.
Give me the page reference again, ma'am.
Page two.
This is page two of the
Of the memorandum of agreement. It's line item number three under HPUDI obligation.
Okay, yes, ma'am, I certainly, thank you so much for that.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon again. So I was asking the question, we're gonna renew this every six years, is that what I'm understanding on the first page?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed your question. And so which line item are you speaking of? What's the subject of that item?
Okay, here.
Yes, yeah, so the terms, and that is because the numbers for the budget, actually, that is going to change anyway, because that number, $25 million budget has increased. But because there's always moving pieces in the county and within the organization, we would like the city to be able to review the terms every six years, if there is any changes that need to be made.
So it's changing from $25 million, you know, to what?
No, we don't. We haven't, we had some rough numbers. It's between 25 to $30 million. And that's because of cost of materials has gone up.
Ms. Strickland, would Highland Park remain the controlling body of the library?
Absolutely. Yes. It is a city asset.
And so programming would still come out of the City of Highland Park?
Yes, we will always work with the City of Highland Park with the programming and, and, and procuring the management.
There will be no D transfers during this process?
No.
Uh, no leads?
No.
You didn't say names.
Yes, I said no leads. And would the McGregor Family Foundation be actively involved in this process?
I'm not sure. Did you reach out to the McGregor Foundation?
We have, we have softly reached out to the McGregor Foundation. We haven't gotten a commitment from the foundation yet, but they do want to know the progress.
Okay.
As a partnership with Highland Park, what is our responsibility?
Responsibilities and obligations are laid out in the second page also, where it says the City of Highland Park shall perform the following obligations. That's provide that full insurance, that's number one. Provide transparency as to any changes made with staff and contractors as it relates to the library. Provide transparency as it relates to the financial support and sources. Basically, the budget, the city's budget for the library. Maintain library grounds and structure and joint agreement with HPUDI. Provide HPUDI access to the library, keys and gates as we, because we'll need that access for the restoration. Provide security and joint agreement with HPUDI for the grounds and buildings, including the boarding of windows, and that is something that we want to move forward with, is securing the building by boarding up the windows and the entry to the building and secure, and installing a security system. And maintaining utilities during the restoration, paying power, water, sewage.
The citizens that are online and the ones that are in the gallery here, we received this document. This is the Public Private Partnership for Libraries. This is for the library service systems. I'm just going to read to you under a chapter that I think will be relevant to the City of Highland Park. They actually have a chapter that says they're selling our library. Okay, and that this chapter addresses the public private partnership solutions that cities and counties retain ownership of their assets. Local officials still have the oversight they need to direct for, said direction and policies while corporate partners take on the detail of how to enhance services and minimize costs. Often associated with public facility and infrastructure contracts, public private partnerships represent a creative method in times of austerity. That means times where the economy is bad. Recognizing their value, several states such as Florida, Maryland, Texas, and Indiana have passed enabling legislation to promote the use of this model. Some local governments, including Palm Coast, Florida, have seized on this idea too with their own public private partnership ordinances. And so this document that they provided to us, I'm sure we can make it, additional copies made available to the public, put some out for them to read, is an explanation of the attempt to create this framework. I have, I do not have any extensive expertise in public private partnerships. I will be learning this as a citizen, just like the rest of you. So I think it might be useful for those people who have questions to have the document so that they can be informed. We still take comments at city council in a written form. Our email addresses are available, so anybody who had a long comment or a long suggestion, believe me, we do get them in our email from citizens. They send us pages. Whether they get a response or not, we do receive the documents. So anybody that had questions about this. Director of Clyburn, I would like to try and make some copies of this available. If you'd be kind enough, maybe sit 10 or 15 in the lobby so that a citizen that was interested could come and pick them up.
They, I'll put them at the real estate window.
Okay.
So if they, you know, want them, they can go to real estate window and request a copy.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it'll be a good read. Mind you, this is our first read. We got the packet on Thursday, so going through this short term, I think there might be people who have been in the city a lot longer, who might have an emotional attachment to their fears with the library, having seen it go from open to the state that it is right now, might feel a little uncomfortable. Reading this document might not make you feel more comfortable, but it will make you more informed, so that when this does come back to us in the citizens' comments, you can actually have some comments that reflect the knowledge that you've obtained by looking at it, and then get those questions answered if possible, or at least voice those questions prior to a vote being taken. So I would certainly encourage the citizens who are watching at home and the ones who are in the gallery, if you would make some time to come back and pick up this packet on public private partnerships.
Two things, one, I think everybody in the city who has an attachment will see those. But they will have some questions and they want to answer, so I agree with you on that. The confidentiality clause, or part in the bottom. Can I want to make sure that everybody understands what goes up under confidentiality. You know, is there any way that one of you can give an example of something that should not be given out information from either HP or from the City of Highland Park and from HPUDI, right? I know that was on the spot, but you know, sometimes when I feel it's confidential, somebody else may not see it's confidential. And needs to understand what exactly, or we probably can't cover everything, but something somebody could accidentally think is all right to give out.
Precious archives and things of that nature that we might have in the library. I mean, I'm starting to, even as I think about that. That's a great question, Ms. Ma, because you want to know. I mean, I'm sure it will relate to financial matters, obviously.
So if there are any archives, so using that as an example, in the library to renovate, we need to move it. But that might not be something that we're sharing with everybody.
Right. I know this is a clause that's normally in contracts, and I, I don't have an example in this case, but if something did come up, both parties would have to agree. I'm not sure, because we are a public entity, and I know only time we go in close sessions are legal matters, so maybe that, maybe something that has to do with a legal matter could be confidential.
Go ahead, ma'am.
First one, probably that was me in wait, when I was waiting this one of my challenges, we had friends on the floor, on the ground. And I was trying to get contact. So where are as of now, say, everything that was in the library?
I believe they talked about it the last time. Ms. Strickland.
Yes.
She was asking about the items that belong in the library. Where, where are they?
Well, I don't know what belongs in the library. I don't know what's missing from the library, but there are items that are in the basement. There are books and there are books, periodicals that are still in the library. Nothing has been moved since we have endeavored on taking on this project that I know of. Now, to my knowledge, there are some things, well, what I've been told, there have been some items moved prior to us coming in, and I don't know what those items are, so the city, I think, would have a better handle on what that inventory looked like before and what it looks like now. Did that answer your question?
It's nothing.
Go right ahead.
Can you guys talk to me about the termination question? I'm reading it. Sneak talk, explain. The termination. Since you have a term, either party terminate its performance of related obligations under this agreement. If the other party fails to rectify a material breach under a portion of this agreement within 30 days of receipt of, I'm sorry, by the reaching part of written notice of such breach from the non-reaching part. In such case, the non-reaching party shall be entitled without further notice to cancel that party's involvement pursuit to the, to the agreement without prejudice to any claims of damage reached a contract otherwise the parties agreed that the failure of termination of any portion of relative, or I'm sorry, or related, relevant, excuse me. Relevant provisions of this agreement shall not be a basis for termination for terminating others. Okay, so mine is kind of leaving, I gotta get a second, sorry. Other, others, several obligations or provisions of this agreement unless the failure of breach is such that the entire agreement loses stability of all its value to the non-reaching part. Can y'all explain that with me, that really make sense?
Sure, would you like me to explain that? Again, this is the legal clause that's in many contracts is to cover both parties. So basically, it's saying that if HPUDI fail to meet its obligation under this contract or under this agreement, the city has 30 day, can issue a 30 day notice to HPUDI to either correct the problem or to cancel out of the agreement. Most times, when it comes to a breach or a failure to perform, there is a workaround it, and it can be, it can be resolved without a total canceling the agreement. So we don't anticipate any type of breach on our side. I've been doing this for a long time, and I haven't reached that point at all. I'm not sure how a breach could happen other than just failure to, to carry out the project.
Okay, the reason I ask that question is because the way that this session is reading is reading like it's, it's saying either part to either party can terminate the agreement, okay? Well, would you just explain what the city has to write to terminate the agreement if you guys
And so
maybe, the reason I'm saying it is maybe this particular section, you have a little, a bit more clarity as to who can do what. Because what it's saying in this particular section here, it's saying that either party can terminate if another party reaches the contract. So if the city does something that it wasn't supposed to do, or something that it was supposed to do, or you do something that you weren't supposed to do, or you failed to do something that you were supposed to do, either party can just terminate the agreement.
And that would be correct. I only spoke on HPUDI side of, of a non-performance. But if there's non-performance on the city's side, sure, we could write a city a 30 day letter. I hardly doubt that, because the city has the asset, and we would definitely want to continue working forward. But I only spoke on HPUDI side, not on the city.
Right, so if the city isn't holding up their hand, they could add, like, you know what, we out this deal. We're not going to raise any more money. We out this deal, we're not going to raise any more money, we're not going to do anything else.
Okay.
Because you, you didn't pay the light bill like you were supposed to.
You know, you know, that's why I asked about this section. This needs to be a little bit more clear, it's a little bit, uh, you know, to me as to who could do what in part of a termination.
Yeah, so both, so both determine, and then, you know, like, they talked about both of, um, you know, the obligations from HP UDI and obligations from the city of Highland Park. Those would be the things that each party be held accountable for. And if that's not what they're doing, then, like I say, on the city's side, if we're not giving, allowing access or we're dragging our feet, giving access or not paying the bill, you know, they may find, you know what? We don't want to deal with it anymore.
Okay, uh, any additional questions? We will move on to Elevate.
All right, well, I appreciate y'all's time and, um, I say, no, we do look to move forward with this, um, next week, so.
Thank you very much. So, um, thank you very much, ma'am. So in May of this year, Mr. Garrett reached out to me about, um, a workshop with Elevate. They're, they, Elevate is a nonprofit that assists communities like Highland Park and securing grant funding. Uh, they would, uh, they would be another resource available at Highland Park's disposal to assist with the securing of grant funding. Grant writers are hard to come by, their training is lengthy and their services are invaluable. So, Mr. Garrett, I'm gonna, since we haven't had some additional time, I'm gonna go ahead and turn the floor over to you. If you have a representative from Elevate here, I want to acknowledge them on the Zoom meeting to make sure that their mics are working and that they can address the public.
Hello everyone. I'm Crystal Bernard, a project manager for Elevate, and I have a colleague on the call as well.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You know, this was, uh, this was a late item that was added.
Yeah, we had space, this is the workshop, so it's just a discussion item, so I made sure we had time because we had space. So I'm gonna turn the floor over to you.
Sure, sure. So, so this was not intended, this is, uh, merely introduction. They had reached out and said they would be interested in assisting the city with, uh, applying for additional grant funds. So this is not the first time that they plan on coming here, so it's very informal. I asked that they do the Zoom presentation and present the materials there, so there aren't any paper materials that were in the packet. This was kind of a late addition, but like I said, this is not, uh, no decisions need to be made, but it's merely an introduction to their group and what they could do. If you like what you hear, uh, hear, then we could proceed forward having a formal presentation of materials and we're moving in that direction. So I'll turn it over to Crystal and Mark, uh, from the Elevate team and let them explain what they could potentially do for the city.
Thank you very much. Do you need, um, Mr. Lackey, do they have shared capability? Who, who we go, who's going to be presenting for us tonight?
I will, I'm so Bernard and I do not have sharing capabilities.
Lackey, if you could help Ms. Bernard get sharing capabilities.
She's awesome.
You are now, okay, thank you very much, man, you're a co-host.
Everyone see my screen?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, we can see it.
Great, well, thank you all for allowing us to present. Um, I'm Crystal Bernard, again, I'm a project manager with Elevate, um, based here in Detroit. And I'll let my colleague introduce himself real briefly.
Good afternoon, um, Honorable Bobby, Highland Park City Council. My name is Mark Carter, I'm the project manager, community consultant. I provide technical assistance to municipal based organizations.
Awesome, thanks, Mark. So just to, uh, frame this a little, I know that Garrett did a minute ago, but Elevate is a clean energy nonprofit. We have more of a justice orientation, meaning we want to help frontline communities. Um, I am from Highland Park, I grew up on McLean, so I'm really grateful that we'll be able to potentially offer y'all some su- support with getting grant funding. So here's an agenda, uh, we'll speak a little to our objectives. Then I'll give an overview of our Michigan programs and pass it to Mark, who will present on our local infrastructure hub, and then we'll open it up for some questions. So here are some of our objectives, and all of these won't happen today, but ideally, we want to, we want you all
We want you all understanding of the services and resources.
We want to learn your current clean energy priorities. So if there are any projects that have been discussed that could benefit from funding, we would like to know about those. Um, and then we want to deepen the relationship between Elevate and Highland Park. Here is our mission statement, we're a national nonprofit, we're headquartered in Chicago, and we have over, um, 200 employees nationally. And we seek to create a just and equitable world in which everyone has clean and affordable heat, cooling, power, and water in their homes and communities, prioritizing frontline communities. So here are the kind of three key areas that a lot of our programming in Michigan falls into. Low income, low workforce development, and resiliency hubs. We work in all of these areas with the goal of trying to advance sustainability, equity, and resilience. Um, so some of the examples of projects we do for low-income housing include the Detroit Preservation Predevelopment Program. That's a program we have with the city of Detroit to preserve multifamily affordable housing. And we do that through offering, uh, developers and owners energy assessments so that they can lower the utility burden on their residents. We also, um, have done work with the Michigan Public Service Commission on their low-carbon infrastructure grant. And we will have a little bit more details about that in a second. So the MPSC Low Carbon Energy Infrastructure Enhancement and Development Grant was this big grant that came out from the state. And we were awarded, um, the grant along with a few other organizations in the state of Michigan. So it's a statewide project, and the goal was to expand capacity of local governments and stakeholders to participate in electrification projects. Um, so we have partners in this, in the city of Benton Harbor, Highland Park, Flint, Grand Rapids, Ann Arbor, Traverse City, and Lansing. So we led community engagement in Highland Park in partnership with Polar Bear Sustainable Energy Cooperative. Um, and what that looked like is having a variety of focus groups and knowledge share to help develop this toolkit that local governments and nonprofit facilities, developers will be able to use um, to create cost-benefit analysis for electrification, um, projects. And I'll show you like, um, a sample of what this toolkit will look like. So this will be like an online toolkit, and it's going to assess carbon reductions. So how much carbon emissions are going to be decreased depending on transition to electric systems, health benefit? So evaluating improvements in air quality, economic impact, analyzing cost savings and benefits from reduced energy consumption. So this toolkit is online, um, and it's supposed to go live later this week, and I will be sure to, um, pass it along to the council. So a, a big part of this I don't want to miss is that, um, local governments, developers, nonprofits, you can go in and put in the information of, let's say you see a grant funding or a state grant, and, um, it's to retrofit a community center or a library or affordable housing. You can go in and say, if I were to upgrade, um, this type of space heater, this type of space cooling, how much money would I save, or what would the operation cost for that look like? Um, and this toolkit will then produce a report for you. And the idea is that, um, these entities can use this report to apply for, for funding and projects. So, um, it's, it's also to take the burden off of, um, smaller organizations and governments. And this will do some of that, that economic assessment work for you.
Can I ask you a question, ma'am? Forgive me for jumping in, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Okay, so, um, all right, have you worked with Michigan Green Communities in the past?
I have not.
Okay. That was my only question.
Okay.
I didn't mean to throw your rhythm off, sorry about that.
No worries, yeah, we, that's what we want, questions, so. Um, uh, the next thing we do is workforce development. An example of that is the Detroit Clean Energy Contractor Accelerator. And we're in our second cohort, and that's where we choose five BIPOC contractors based in metro Detroit. And we introduce them to clean energy technologies. So for example, we'll teach an HVAC contractor how to install a heat pump, or we'll teach a roofer how to install solar. Um, so, so that's some of the work we do, uh, with the workforce. We also support resiliency hubs, um, so we work with Resilient Eastside Initiative and the Wayne County Resiliency Hub Network, um, to help support retrofitting community centers and other buildings to be climate resilient. So that's through, um, solar and battery storage. So in the event of a power outage, um, someone could, from the community, come and refrigerate their insulin or come and use Wi-Fi, um, so we, we do that work as well. And then I will kick it over to Mark.
Good afternoon, everyone, once again. Um, I am part, like I said before, of the, uh, consulting team. And I'll just give you a brief overview of the local infrastructure hub program. Now, number one goal is to empower local leaders to align your community priorities with your CBOs and partners within the community-based organizations and the municipality to secure funding for climate equity priorities with federal and state governments. The, uh, breakdown for our local infrastructure hub, uh, is combined with initiatives with the funders who are Bloomberg Philanthropies, Waver Street, uh, Foundation, Ford Foundation. Our regional hub partners include, of course, Elevate Southeast Sustainable Directors Network. And the Project Courtney, we're granting, uh, includes Sustainable City Funds with the New Venture Fund. And of course, our consulting partners, it's Thomas Consulting Group and City Scales. A number of key community program services include community engagement, you know, of course, with multi stakeholders engaging and supporting community planning process, our project development, projects and projects mapping, visibility studies and analysis, and grant application support, which is extremely important. Because we found that a lot of municipalities don't have the, uh, capacity, uh, for, uh, grant writing support. So that's where our technical support is really key, um, to assist you. Pursuant to previous, uh, LIH work in Highland Park, uh, we've worked with the Department of Energy on the Energy Futures Grant, which was a, um, a 500,000, uh, grant working with, uh, ECO Work. Um, and, you know, for its existing projects in the equal districts, uh, in the city of Highland Park. We've worked with EPA, ADC on the Solar For All Grant. That was a huge grant, $456 million to build solar for our programs, which is a pass-through structure, which at this point, present time, is still undetermined. And of course, we provide technical assistance to community organizations. Uh, that's where I come in to provide ongoing support and increase coordination in, uh, if, you know, the final grants decisions. Uh, the EPA, EJ, uh, Thriving Community Grant Program, um, is designed to benefit, um, you know, disadvantaged communities to reduce pollution and community climate resiliency, and to build community response to environmental, um, climate issues. Uh, application deadline at this time is unknown. Uh, but we do know that the final award is going to be, and I'm, this is $600 million for this type of program. So this, that's a, that's an excellent opportunity. And, you know, these are the current state grants that's currently in the pipeline. And the EPA Greenhouse Gas Reduction Fund Program, this is a 20, 20 billion dollar, uh, program dedicated to funding clean and equitable finance, especially for low-income, uh, communities. So funds that will be announced, uh, later than the fall of 2024. And, uh, the goal is to, you know, so we're focused on projects that reduce, uh, GHG emissions and designed to mobilize private capitalization, capitalization and finance projects that have not, not, you know, might have been, um, financed. So at this time, we will take, uh, see if you have any questions.
I have one question for you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the city of Highland Park is in a kind of a crosshairs. We have one freeway to the east of us, we have another freeway to the west of us, and we have a freeway that goes right through the middle of our city. We have questions about air quality. Would this, would your organization be able to help us track down grant funding to help us look at a study of our current air quality and what it could potentially be once these trucks are rolling through? Is that the type of work that you, that your organization would help us with?
I would say yes, and I will refer to my colleague who has more time on the, um, with the company, Crystal.
Crystal? Yeah, for sure, um, we certainly can help with air quality-related projects. So a little bit about the structure is, we would share with the city some grant programs, that state or federal that we've identified. Um, and then we work with you in figuring out how could we create a project around it, um, that is also meets the requirement of the grant. So we found one that could include, we can make the stretch to include air quality components. Then we would apply for that, um, with you all. One thing I will note, though, is a lot of the state and federal funds right now require there to be a partnership. So normally what that will look like is we will work with you and then a community-based organization. And we would, you know, tie in a project between the two and then use that to apply for the funding. But air quality, uh, funds certainly, um, either currently exist and that's something we would have to go through our database to find, or are on the horizon.
Okay, I have, I have one more, and I'm gonna turn the floor back over to my colleagues, because it speaks to something that my councilwoman had mentioned to us in the past. Um, would, would you also be willing to? Would you say that there are resources out there to help communities like Highland Park manage our stormwater and flooding issue? And I'm gonna pass this over to my colleague who's done a lot more work in it, because we, our basements flood.
Mm-hmm.
We, we, we have issues with, uh, water in general, but our basements flood. And so that was something that my councilwoman brought to me, um, as an item that, at some point, she wants to discuss. Could you help us find resources related to that?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was gonna say, uh, I'm, I'm turning it over to my, to my colleague here, because she actually helped raise the, um, my level of, of awareness about the subject. So, uh, we, that's just one of the things I wanted to know, could you help us with tracking down funding for that type of research also? Or for that type of, uh, program?
Oh, yes, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, air quality, air quality, stormwater, infrastructure, um, solar. All of these things are related to clean energy, we can help find funding for. And that's what we're paid by Bloomberg Philanthropies to do. Um, so again, it would be a matter of having a deeper discussion about exactly what the issue is, what project could be formed off of that, and how it fits, um, current grant opportunities. So, but anything clean energy related, we definitely have the resources to do. And we want to hear these things, like, this is really helpful already to know that air quality and stormwater infrastructure is a concern. Um, so with that, I will pass it back and also kind of want to open up to the space, any other clean energy related, um, situations happening?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Man, I completely, the floor is open, anyone who wanted to, uh,
Okay, I know, of course, I want to make sure, I know, um, Mr. Garrett, you said they're gonna come back. Uh, this was just the hello introduction.
Yeah.
Because this could go.
Yes. Yes, and like you heard today, I mean, it, what would be helpful is there's a list of things, like you started talking about stormwater.
what would be helpful is there's a list of things, like you started talking about stormwater. Uh you know, put together five lists of priorities that that you really wanna focus on. They could put together some, and then we come back and we have a list of priorities. We could sit through those and then go through the normal process where we say, can we have permission to apply for these grants and go through the formal process? So this is just introduction to them. If there's things that you wanna talk about, put on a list, tell them. We'll get a list compiled, and then we can have another workshop where we kinda go down and says, yeah, we wanna apply for these six or seven grants. Then we would come back with the applications like we normally do, ask for permission, and then let and then turn lips.
Okay. So with that being said, uh Council President mentioned some of my concerns. One is definitely air quality. We have a um in this actually District One off of Oakland, there's a concrete business or they do something. And so that area is really complaining about when they're breaking up the concrete. So that begins to be definitely air quality as well as a lot of the businesses or industrial area companies, their trucks are bringing stuff out onto the roads. And it's tracking into people's houses, it's in their cars, um etc. So is there, you know, you don't have to answer that, but that is one of those priorities. Uh air quality, whether they should be um have some restrictions or you know, what are the conditions that they should even read it? The other thing is decarbonization. I know that there's a decarbonization grant that has been out there. Uh I think it's the it's the Midwest Decarbonization Grant. I don't know uh all the particulars or it hasn't ended, it's still going. That would be one. And with that one, I know too, it goes into the house, I believe, with each resident. And they can learn how they can change their utilities or their appliances. Okay, uh to help have better air quality in the house, um for such things as asthma, etc., breathing. Um so that's one grant. The other one is that I mentioned so far, Affordable Healthy Homes Project. Would that be something as well that you would cover? So I know this question may have been asked, so I'm gonna rekindle it. So you come and you will come to us also with grants that you feel that would suit our community in Highland Park. We also can come to you and say, hey, like I just did, these are a list of some of the grants I'm already aware of. But we don't necessarily have the resources to right now go go look at it. You will look at those for us.
Yes.
And then I noticed
Yes.
You have some questions on the board, saying, what are your green priorities in Highland Park? So I'm asking you, does that refer to our parks? Or what's in our master plan? Are you asking us that about our green priorities? Or are you just asking us, what do we wanna see more green of? Because I I know a lot of things I wanna see more green, more more green of. Um and so that's, I guess, I'm reasking you a question based on the question I see on the board.
Yeah, so um you have it exactly right. We wanted to figure out what clean energy priorities. And clean energy, including environment, water, air priorities you wanna see in Highland Park. So air quality was one, stormwater was one, um home decarbonization is one of them. And what we'll do is, we will share the grant opportunities that we see that could fit those objectives. And we wanna work with you on the application for that grant, which normally would include having some concrete idea of a project that we could do.
Screen share. We wanna see you.
Oh.
Yep, we folks wanna see face.
Yep, sorry.
Uh huh, no problem. Right, y'all gotta be in the meeting. Yep, we can see now. Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah. So that's one of them. And then I know you mentioned decarbonization. I can speak a lot to uh the project that we're currently contracted to do until a formal press release uh comes out. But we do have a project where we will be working in Highland Park, offering home energy assessments and then some retrofit opportunities to residents. And so that energy assessment is looking at the current energy consumption of a house, making recommendations for how to um alleviate that consumption and then ideally saving the resident on utilities. Um and we wanna also help pay for our recommendations, so if it's insulation or whatever. Um but that's one of the projects that we're we're going to launch here at Elevate this year in Highland Park as an example.
So you're making me smile. Uh I think lastly for me is uh you had a question. It says, uh what projects would you like to to be funded for you guys? Give me a little bit more on that question before I I jump in on it.
Well, I I heard a lot about the library, um which, again, I'm from Highland Park. They P-Library heard us all that going down. Um imagining some solar project at the library or imagining um a green way at the library, that's an example of a project that I personally would like to see funded in Highland Park. But if there are other examples that y'all have identified that y'all wanna see funding for, um we wanna be able to have an idea so that when we apply for these grants, we can say, not only do we uh deserve the money, because Elevate has done a feasibility study on the positive environmental impacts of this project, but also we already have an idea for the money. So that's kinda where that question comes from.
Okay.
Councilwoman, can I tell you something real quick?
Yep.
So
We got about five minutes left.
So you think about the outages that we have in Highland Park quite frequently, right? So we can utilize them to uh help us search for grants for some community solar, some small community solar fields that we can get some of our homes, some of our buildings off the network so that we have something that's more sustainable. So that's the kinda thing. Also, uh you know, I know there's not probably a need for them right now, but I would love to see some some EV chargers on what where we, right, especially by the library, just right up in this corridor, generate some revenue for the city. Uh I I know that the city probably is not currently right now in a position to take advantage of that all through the city, but I'm thinking Hamilton, you're thinking of what were your corridors? That's that's places where you can get some charging uh action and some people stopping when the library is up and running and generate some revenue. So those are the kinda things from a sustainability standpoint that are on my list are projects that I would say, hey, let's go get some community solar dollars so that we can take a third of our um users off the grid and make it make the city more sustainable. That's the kinda stuff that that I would put up, that would be on my wish list, in addition to what the council has, in addition to what they would bring. We have one robust list. Prioritize that and then say, okay, we're gonna go after these things. That's how this is is gonna come together.
I promise you, this is it. So with that being said, there was a couple of things. One, talking about that um Parker Village.
Right.
We can work together, you know, and and so he's been talking about it prior to him. It was a conversation many years and many years ago, exactly what you're talking about, having those charging stations. So we do have somebody who's trying to make things happen. If you can help them, you know, and work with your company, work with you, etc., we need to help each other. Um and here's my other thing. I have a lot of people, believe it or not, come to me. And so we have everybody all over the place that are, I guess, I'm receiving these different grants. And they're doing solar, but it's so small. And then you're not sure what it's because I recently heard something about fiber rock. How does that work being underneath? You don't have to answer that, but I'm just throwing that out there, you know, is that something that we need underneath our ground? From somebody else, or are we supposed to get it from ATT? We just have so many people bombarded. We really need to, like, I appreciate you bringing it up, so we can kinda narrow it down versus everybody just blocking on that doorstep. So thank you. Thank you for your brief presentation. And again.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Please remember, we we're here for as a resource. So please utilize our services, and that's what we're here for.
All right. All right, folks. Thank you very much. I hit a six fifty-six, and I'm gonna declare the workshop meeting adjourned. We'll start our normal city council meeting in about five minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.